Greetings, everyone. The hour is upon us. Why don't we start here? Welcome to our 17th of June Board of Trustees meeting. On that's the opening Tuesday afternoon. So first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from May meeting. So everyone had a chance to review those with comments, questions. We have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to say, uh, minutes have you to set up for this meeting to approve?
We have a motion to approve as our second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, I wish you further discussion on the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like so. Okay, the minutes are approved and submitted. Uh, we have no guests or public comments, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one, sorry. The nominated committee meeting also invited to elect the officers for this coming year. Myself, Richard Clark is going to be chair. Summer is our list of our clerk secretary. This meeting, two motion to approve those. My motions. Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, so we will approve the slate of officers for this current charge session. Well, okay, so now for the guests and comments, we don't have anybody who signed up. Now, for the moment you've been waiting for, my own report. See, we had a successful ribbon cutting for the Bookie Monster project back in, um, May 27th. We had a good crowd here and well represented and got to feed the books in. I had to feed my book in with the conveyor belt, kind of fun. But had a good crowd, had a good coverage of the newspaper and all the news media. I think we had a great time. We also had the ribbon cutting for the tween room. That was on June 2nd. And that was seeing the renovation type place and looked really good and mayor's phone. I sent something to Dustin. The county commission will be voting on the new board of trustee members on the two days on Thursday. So we'll find out who our new listers members will be with them. Then I apparently have to go before the city of Maryville council on July 1st to vote it in. Chairperson said, hopefully that will go through and I won't have any of the skeleton come out of the closet. The friends of the library are having their annual meeting tomorrow. Is that right? Wednesday at 1:00 to 3:00, lunch at the 4:00, is that right?
Well, it depends on who you ask. We're going to be ready to feed people and we have a party until about 1:30 to noon. Then we'll have a meeting in there and the one we're packing up and leaving, so that would be too late.
Okay.
Is that about accurate?
That's a clear response, yes. Then Friday, we're having, there's the foundation is meeting at 8 o'clock in the morning. Would anybody just love to go to that? Here's the, it's all good. At some point, I would like to ask for volunteers to kind of go to some of these meetings, which kind of help, help take the load off with those specific interests. It's no big deal, I can handle. We're so much fun, you know, it's just an absolute blast to sit at 8 o'clock in the morning, get a cup of coffee and listen to friends.
Chair Brinkley, I, I, I did hear that there was some interest in Ms. Regan going to the, uh, Blount County Board meeting, the commission meeting, yeah.
I'll cover that.
Yeah.
I'll cover the commission meeting.
And little something extra in your paper.
Right, exactly.
Okay, I think that concludes my report. There's a few things that I'm going to defer to Dustin, who's coming in next. It's a library director report.
Well, thank you very much, sir. I just wanted to first of all say that, um, I gave you all a copy of a kind of a quick overview of what you'd asked for to kind of showcase, um, my progress and my direction and what I've been trying to do. The main thing that you'll hear from me whenever I'm, uh, walking around is I've been trying to hear, absorb and guide. Because really, I, I believe in serving leadership and coaching and so I feel like it's very inappropriate of me to offer my services to, uh, say, I think we should go in this direction without at least knowing how the ship is steering in the first place on most things. I am in the middle of shadowing departments right now. I have worked in the cafe a couple of shifts and thankfully, uh, my drinks were at least drinkable, so that was a nice compliment that I received. Advocacy and purpose is something that I've been trying to highlight with the staff a lot. I think that it's important not just as staff to remember that you're here for a job, but you're also here for eight hours a day. So it's important to know what you're doing and to think about why you're here. A very smart person in the room, somebody that, uh, I had a meeting with, had asked me, what is your two-minute elevator speech whenever you think about the library? And it made me think, that's a great question because there's so many good things that I could say about this library, but how do you make it in two minutes? And, um, is your two-minute speech the same speech that you'd want to give to Greg or, or, uh, you know, Robert or, uh, you know, Marcus in the room? And, um, you know, I really wanted to have them think about that because I, I believe that it's not just myself and the board that's advocating for the library, it's every one of us. And so I challenged them a little bit to think about that. I also challenged them in creative ways to try and think about their customer service experiences. Because I think that happier staff also means less turnover and better customer service. So I have a couple examples. There were a total of three news reports on the Bookie Monster and the tween ribbon cuttings. There were 15,580 individual pages that were reached online for those two ribbon cuttings. And that was, uh, data from June 4th. So June 4th and before, I don't even know what it is now. And there were 238 cookies eaten. Thank you again, uh, Ms. Thompson for providing some of the said cookies. And one very happy sister from the tween room that is quoted as saying, I can finally get away from my little sister. So, um, speaking of staff changes, Karen Viscachill, I'm happy to report that she's been chosen to be our next patron services specialist. Karen was one of our part-time associates in the children, in the patron services area. And so with her moving up, we are now under another vacancy that we're going to be trying to fill pretty soon. I can't thank enough people for all of you who have facilitated network partnerships and meetings. There have been a lot of impactful relationships, um, that have been instrumental in forging potential partnerships down the road. For example, Travis Gardner invited me to the local chamber of commerce event, which introduced me to several members of the Maryville school system. And I'm happy to report that hopefully we're going to be pushing forward with an initiative where we can find areas of internships and volunteers to help with the library system, particularly with students that have an interest in public relations and the cafe. As we speak, is in the middle of doing an enrollment for that kind of an application where we can find potential partnerships in the high school setting. And hopefully we can both get some high school students some well-needed experience and also assist us in other avenues as well with getting the networks out. There have been 14 other organizations that I've reached out to and I'm happy to say that every organization and person I've spoken with spoke very highly of the library. And so I'm very excited to see what other opportunities there are. I have to give a shout out thankfully to, um, Bandy. So she got me in touch with Bob Myers. And, um, all of you have mentioned the interest and need of a strategic plan. And I feel that that strategic plan could be done with just library staff, but I think a facilitator would help keep us on track, make sure that the timeline is succinct and, um, help us overall with the general, um, project management skills that he can provide. Mr. Myers has been assisting the Friends of the Library with their strategic plan. He also comes well recommended with a valuable, um, amount of experience. So before anything, I'd like to, uh, get an idea of his cost, his scope and his deliverables. And once I have that in mind, I'll, uh, present to you all as well to make sure that we can, uh, move forward with him if possible. Thank you all to the TC, for the TCRS sync rollover that was provided for last month. I did send a memo over to the, uh, Blount County Chamber of Commerce. And so that was sent over to Mr. Anderson, um, for discussion on Thursday. I'll be present if there's any questions. I'll be also present at the Friends of the Library Annual Talk here coming up pretty soon. As far as facilities, there was a little bit of a, um, surprise this week. We had a couple of patrons come in and say that they reported a smell coming into the room that smelled a little bit like gas. It was reported to the manager of patron services. And then, um, she did a great job kind of, um, gathering other patrons to make sure that it wasn't just one or two people, but several people that smelled it. We then contacted risk management and facilities. Emergency services were called out. The building was evacuated for a period of about 30 minutes to ascertain whether there was a leak or not. There was no leak. The report is likely based on a smell that was coming from somewhere outside that made its way into the building. The fire department did check everywhere. There was no indication whatsoever of a gas leak and we were given the all-clear to come back inside.
You should know that he did call me and wonder if the friends have buried bodies. Might have been the swarfs.
Yes, ma'am. For those of you that have not been in the children's area, the butterflies are back and they're growing big enough to where there's a large tent now and they're starting to see some crawl up the side so they can start to cocoon. We tried out bingo nights and that was such a huge success. We had 50 people on the waiting list. So we decided that was going to be something that we were going to try for another night. We are experiencing some issues with, uh, certain areas of the building being a little cooler than they should be. Right now, we are assessing the chiller to make sure that everything is okay. It's looking to be repaired sometime in the near future. And I do, this just literally happened today, so there's unfortunately not a cutout. We were, uh, we sent out a meme, uh, essentially highlighting some of our databases and for universal course classes. Well, somehow the company was able to find out about that and has requested to use it globally throughout their database. And so we are going to be represented globally thanks to our amazing public relations team, so.
Wow.
And, uh, that is all of my report.
Okay, thank you. Travis Gardner is not here. I don't have a report on the foundation. One thing I felt to mention, we are on the 27th. So Bandy and Travis are going to have a kind of workshop, ad hoc workshop between us just to kind of see what's, how we all kind of fit together with these groups and how we can improve fundraising. That'll, that'll be able to complete the strategic plan on September 7th. Let's move on to Bandy, can you bring your report?
And, um, colleague D is with me this afternoon, so if I leave something out, uh, let me know. We are preparing for our annual meeting tomorrow, so various people on the board likely have been giving me reports projecting to the end of June so that tomorrow we can report to our members about how things are going. So I wanted to let you know that currently we have 820 active members. That is a huge uptick and I think we've got a really good way of not only we're doing a better job of recruiting them, but also record-keeping. You may remember that I mentioned two or three months ago that D had led a committee to choose a new database management system that is for nonprofits and it's working really well for us. I learned that we have provided a little over $102,000 to collaborate in the past fiscal year for, for projects and activities and we're proud of that and proud to help. We also have right now in the books 141 volunteers. You'll always hear the volunteers say, we need more volunteers because some volunteers maybe go to, I don't know, Hawaii for the winter, so they're not here. So we got 141 people that consider themselves engaged. Our strategic plan that we have talked so much about, facilitated by Bob Myers, is ready to go to the board next week. That is a little bit like birthing a baby. And, uh, I will tell you about Bob. He took us, it was one of the best strategic planning processes I've ever been through. And then we got to this point about a month ago where he said, rest of you, you gotta go write it. I don't write the plan, I just, and, and we went, okay. So our team of, there are seven board members that are on the team and they have done a great job of, you know, writing and texting and drafting and, uh, I'm, I'm really proud of it. It's very specific. We are announcing it as a two-year plan so that we can get things nailed down and it won't be this long five-year thing that kind of drags and gathers us. So we're really pleased with that. And the big news is that in June, last two weekends ago, we blew through our income for a quarterly, uh, hook sale. And I think for the first time broke 20,000, uh, $20,000. We are very good at what we do and you should be very nice to us. And I just watch it as they say, I referred to someone last week to the basement and I got two texts saying, we refer to it as the place where the magic starts. They already said basement again, so. And I think, anything else you want to add?
Thank you. Liz?
Hey, hello. Um, so you all have our, uh, June report. Our libraries are very busy, um, with all of their summer reading program activities, of course. We were very busy to provide, um, through TSLA, the summer library program, library summer library program manuals and promotional materials that we deliver to libraries just to help them promote that program. We are so glad to see that going. Those are so important and a huge part of what libraries do for their community. So exciting to hear all the exciting things that are going on with summer reading program. Plan six of them, I committed them all myself and I do miss it on occasion. We are, uh, working with library boards to ask you to have updates for membership on your board appointment list. Please just let us know that information so we can update that. You all are great at doing that. Also, of course, continuing to encourage folks to complete the trustee certification program. If you haven't done that yet and you're not already registered, I think I've registered everybody. If you haven't had an opportunity to complete those, if you can do that by June 30th, that will help the library as they apply for the upcoming tech grant, um, for the 2026. Public Library Service Agreement, Mr. Brinkley signed already. I forgot to bring you all copies, I had those and I forgot to bring them, so I will send them to you so that you have your records. All staff CE requirements should be met by June 30th. We're reminding our libraries about their access to ReadSquared, which is software for them to run virtual programs, virtual summer reading programs, everybody's do that, or reading challenges. Also reminding our library staff that all staff must complete Title VI training by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. I don't say these days, so sorry, but they all fall while you're in the summer reading program. Summer is the busiest time for public libraries, so, and we have a lot of deadlines. Of course, it's also the fiscal year end.
Liz, I'm happy to report that we are completely compliant as of today.
Right.
The last one was finished today.
Excellent, perfect, that's great. And then the standard survey is a survey that library directors do every year. We'll work on that. July 15th is the deadline. We talked about the standards quite a bit, the state standards for non-metropolitan public libraries. They're not requirements, they're goals. And once we receive all of the statewide data, we'll put that together and provide you all with the colored sheets of all the standards for the past fiscal year just to a comparative analysis. Thank you. I think you mean most, every single one of them.
Oh, geez.
It's a fantastic library, and why not? Um, and then the other document that you all had, of course, is the Reads Regional even though it's not available, statistics circulation, uh, for the month of May for all the libraries in our region. And of course, Blount County has the most circulation at 24,398.
Okay, thank you, Liz. The next one is nominated committee of conference, this is not only you, it's now, before you mention it.
Yes, I have to take that one off.
But that's a, that should be, been stricken from the.
Yes.
Okay, for, uh, moving on to whole business, we have a lot here in programming and policy, which, uh, just a little bit, well, I'm just going to correct it.
Yes. Final look at it.
Okay, final look at the program and policy. Just the motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second, second. Any further discussion on this policy? Hearing none, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I'll move. Put that in the air. I'm just going to decide something. Then moving to all to the business, we have a conflict of interest policy. That has a few corrections on there. This is for information over this. Do I have any questions, comments, concerns, issues?
On to higher. That's an important part of our team. For, well, sure.
Because tonight is supposed to be a period. We get that changed, but not all day. So that was a fantasy on the name.
Thank you.
Good.
I forgot to.
H470, yeah, okay. The thing I was, yeah, towards on a line to, it took me, it took me a while to finish. Okay, so we have this, uh, comments corrected and we will, well, that's, actually, which will be in August.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's see. Now we come to the A to Z database, which is a multi-agreement subscription company. If I will let Dustin explain what this is.
Yes, sir. So this, uh, A to Z databases is a business database. It's meant to support small businesses and, um, those that are interested in making a, starting a business essentially. One of the key perspectives of A to Z databases is, um, it allows you to find out and aggregate data on businesses ranging from, um, the name of the CEO to the location of a certain industry. It has a special feature inside that allows you to, for instance, if you were trying to start an ice cream store, it allows you to look at a map and determine, um, where other ice cream stores are on the map to help identify the best place that you would want to put your business. It's, uh, something that's been used very widely and frequently with the library. It is popular, we're hoping to continue on with this service. It's, uh, it is a database that we have had in the past and we're hoping to, uh, secure a three-year contract because of costs specifically.
So, uh, see, the library has used A to Z previously. Or would this be for the, this be starting up?
This is a, this is a renewal.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Nothing is there? I mean, that's included in the budget for next year, so.
Yes, to my knowledge, Ange Nae has secured the funding to request it as being part of the database.
And any idea, just out of curiosity, how, how much use it gets?
Um, I could give you specifics. I have been told that it is widely used among the businesses that, uh, that come in as patrons. I have been told that it's something that we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. It is a competitor to, um, what was you, what used to be called Reference USA and is now Data Axel. They offer almost the exact same services, um, but generally at a cost about 33% less.
Okay, yeah, this, I mean, it's, um, I just, I'm hoping, my hope was is that we would, if we have it, that it's, if people are using, using it because it does, that would be something that's, it's good given kind of some of the other business-related resources that we've got here in town, say with the chamber and the partnership and so forth.
Certainly.
So now, would this service be on access through the, through the library?
No, um, it, it is accessible from home as well, uh, if you're a cardholder. So as a cardholder, you wouldn't be able to access this in your home.
Big motion that we approve this request to fund the A to Z databases.
Second.
First, second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, so we will proceed with preparing this and make the change.
Yes, sir, I'll submit it to, uh, finance and, uh, then go with permission for approval.
I know, I know, motion is carried, so I'm looking at option two, is more, is that the options?
That's, that's.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, let's see. The next item on the agenda is request to close the library for staff development day, the library staff on November 21st. That's where everybody goes back to school, they never obviously will close, close, close to the facility.
Yes, sir.
So is there any, a motion to close the facility?
Do you have any idea, Dustin, about what your plan is for that day? Or have you thought, dang, the plan that far ahead?
I did just today have a meeting with Discover Blank and I found out about a lot of different, uh, exciting opportunities about, um, trainings and leadership and management. Was going to be one that I was going to try and, um, look more into. There's also been some staff suggestions that I was going to explore, but honestly, that's the, the most I have at this moment, yeah.
So that's the topic for that discussion that day.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, that's good, continued education, I guess, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. And it is something that we've always continuously done, uh, in Dayton, November. I believe it's the third Friday.
It should be this third Friday.
Okay.
The week before Thanksgiving.
It's a time generally when the library is a little less slow. It's a time right before we start having a lot of staff wanting vacation. Seems like an opportune time to be able to close if we're going to close.
Uh, yes, I, I, hold on.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, did you make that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We have one motion by standing, is your second? Okay. We have one motion by standing. Is there a second?
Second.
But the sentence, any further discussion, any questions? Hearing none, we'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Votes, motion carries, so we will shut down that day for staff development. Uh, next item is for silent disco, like a runway. September twenty-seventh, from six to eight. I guess that's something after hours.
Yes, sir. It is a, uh, Taylor Swift silent disco, is my correct? Yeah. So, yeah, it's definitely one that's interesting. I don't know if I'll be there necessarily, but, um.
You had that last year.
We did.
Yeah. Maybe a year forward.
Last year was the first year.
That's the first year.
Yeah, and it went really, really well. People had a lot of fun. There were three different channels, three different DJs. And the patrons could choose between the channels. So two of the channels were Taylor Swift and then one was just kind of like a dance mix. And so you had all different ages, um, out there and it was so much fun. Myself, Rebecca Melvin and a, a past, uh, employee were the DJs. It was so much fun to sit up on the stage and watch all the kids, the adults, everybody, just like dancing and grooving, but you hear nothing except for their laughter or them singing. It was so much fun. It was a really good time, so I'm excited we're doing it again.
Do you have to sign up that beforehand or can you just show up that night?
I don't know how Sarah Corso, manager of Reference, I don't know how she's doing it this year. Um, do you remember if we had signups, Rebecca, last year? It was first come, first served. Um, and I think it was advertised that way as well, so I, I can't remember. We had hundreds, at least like a hundred or two hundred pairs of headphones that night, so, yeah.
They weren't headphones.
They were headphones. Yeah. Yep.
That's the best way to listen. So do we need a motion to keep, to keep the library open? I'll, so. I'll, I'll move to keep library open then. Okay, we have, we have.
Second.
Second, um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, that motion carries, so we will look forward to the silent disco. Uh, okay, so the last item on the agenda here for new business is the Tremont Writers Program, October twenty-fifth.
One correction. I changed it in the digital copy, but because I had already printed it, I couldn't change it. The time is not six to eight, it's five thirty to seven. That's the request.
Five thirty to seven?
Yes.
And that's a, is that here? Is that?
Yes, that would be here.
I think it's settled, uh, settled to closing for all of business as well.
So yes, this would be an, uh, outside organization, the Tremont Program, that, um, I, I would have to get a little more background knowledge to be able to describe the specifics of it. Um, it's generally part of the association with the Writers Club, the Writers in Residence Program.
We did it last year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
I moved that we, um, open the library on October twenty-fifth for this.
Okay, we have motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, that motion carries, so. Got your number two pencils in the jar. Uh, okay, let's move on down to important dates. There's a county commission meeting Thursday. Don will, Don will be there. And when, earlier when we were talking about the nominations, is that, did this week?
It is. It is. It was not, well, I, and I, I hadn't looked at the, uh, it was not on the agenda. For the workshop, but it is on unfinished business, because I texted and asked, why was it not on there? But it's on there now. It's on the new agenda for Thursday nights.
It should have been last month, right?
Yeah. Yes, it's unfinished business because we got deferred to this month, so it will be taken care of Thursday night.
And Friends of the Library is June the twenty-fourth, fourth, is that the?
Fourth of.
Is there anyone would like to attend that?
That's Tuesday. I can do that.
If you can't, that's fine.
I can.
Okay, so Don will attend that. I'm just trying to be selfish with my time and kind of spread the wealth, so people go, hey, it's, you know, I have so much fun.
Is that, is that in the, where the action takes place or what was?
Oh, we have a mat and glass. It's, it's good. They have fun at their meetings.
We do.
Okay, let's see. Uh, Foundation meets twenty, which is eight o'clock, good time of Friday morning, and I'll, I'll plan to go with that. It's a lot of fun to hear Travis and his talks. Then the municipal council meeting is July the first. I also been attended that one. Hopefully get it voted on, going before, or voting in something. And then Alcoa, Board of Commissioners, you got it, Dexter?
Yeah. And I think this time, uh, Destin will be, uh, joining me.
Be joining, oh, you're, sir.
Yeah, I got him on the agenda, so we're, we're presenting to the board.
Okay.
Yes, and people too.
Um, then our next board meeting is in August, August the nineteenth. There's no meeting next month, so everybody can have time to pitch or whatever. So we will see everyone on August. And don't forget July twenty-fourth. Don't, I was coming.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't.
I just do your thing. Having our first rehearsal tomorrow night. Have to practice my Elizabeth. Anyways, it should be fun. We've got a lot of, lots of songs prepared. For those who don't know, I've done a, uh, music program on July the twenty-fourth here. I've got a lady playing the harpsichord, a fake one. And I'll be, me and a friend of mine will be singing songs written by John Dowlin, who was, who was an English, uh, composer from the sixteenth century. It's kind of cool stuff that most people probably never heard before.
And the friends aren't having to pay for this, are we?
Friends of what?
The friends aren't having to pay for this.
Friends don't pay for this at British foundations. So yes, it's, it's all free, but exits are in the rear, so. Anyway, it's, uh, all of Dowlin's music was secular, so you have a limited place, can't do the mature shit, all about love and despair and tears and grief and all that. Beautiful stuff. And Dowlin was a friend of William Shakespeare and he helped write some of the music for some of Shakespeare's plays. But since it was four hundred and fifty years ago, with records are kind of slow. But it's amazing that that music still exists. That's kind of, that's kind of funny, so. If anybody wants to listen to any beforehand, Sting did a, uh, album of Dowlin music with a, oh, playing the lute. Playing the lute, and the guy was incredible. Yes, yes. Uh, recorded in two thousand and six and it's just amazing stuff. Nobody knows how Dowlin music sounded, so it was all kinds of different combinations and solos, de-raps, quartets, whatever, esqueguel and stuff. It's very bittersweet. These people love this stuff. So there you are. So be there, be square.
We should add one thing from the friends, since you all are all going on vacation in July and some of us are going to be here working. Uh, we do have another teacher appreciation book sale on August eighth?
Ninth.
Ninth. Um, and so do let teachers that you know, it was so successful last year, the folks did just a great job putting it together. It was a really nice thing for teachers. So if you have teachers in your life, tell them about it.
Okay.
Right.
It's awesome.
Chair, Chair Brinkville, if I could, I have one additional thing that I, I just wanted to highlight, uh, Ms. Stephanie Thompson for, as, as, uh, the whole, for all of the work, the incredible work. She's done for the library and the staff thoroughly appreciate it, including myself, and I don't think, I, I think that the whole library is better because of all of her efforts.
Yes, I'll come with that.
No.
Important parcel to that, we have some refreshments to show our appreciation to Steph for her.
You very much.
Stellar performance, says contributions to this.
I can't say that it's all been fun, but I have enjoyed it.
Pay's been good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what my husband always said, you're getting paid how much?
So.
But it's been very rewarding and I really appreciate the, the, um, trustees and all the trustees that we've had for six years now and the staff, um.
So that's all the business that we have. Anybody else have any final things?
I made a motion that we adjourn.
Well, but, but honest, after that, after that, Stephanie, tell them about Gay and Marissa being at Mount LaConte. Where was the guy from?
My sister and her daughter, I came out to LaConte and spent the night upstairs. And they were sitting, eating supper, and I don't know how they, how the conversation got started, but the guy that was there, and I can't remember where he was from, he wasn't around here.
Illinois or.
Yeah, somewhere.
Or somewhere.
They were talking about where they were from and, and my sister said, oh, I'm from Blunt County, just down, you know, down the hill and all that. And he started going on and on and on about how wonderful the Blunt County Library was.
Oh.
But he had been in here and he, it was, it was beautiful and just how much, um, he enjoyed it and, and the people were so nice and so that was kind of, kind of odd.
That's how, that's neat.
Small world.
Similar story. My, my next boy neighbor who came up after I was voted to be, to this illustrious position. She brought a newspaper clipping over and knocked on the door and said, we just love the library. You know, I never knew that land, so it was interesting. The people just all over.
Great here.
So it's really kind of heartblowing. So, it's sort of an island in the stream, so it's really nice. We're diamond rough, whatever, please. Some days it's more rough than the diamond. Anyway, thank you all and, um, well, tonight, we appreciate Stephanie yet again, and please let's clean up with, uh, refreshments here, so. And you may go first.
Oh, thank you.
Should we adjourn first? Motion to adjourn. I mean, I mean, this, this means we adjourn.
Second. Thank you.
All those in favor to adjourn and play.
Aye.